All those say aye?
Aye.
Anybody say nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilmember Crossman. Now moving on to special presentation. All right, we have National Proclamation, or excuse me, National Voter Day Registration, uh, National Voter Registration Day proclamation, whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on Election Day, and whereas Thurston County is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections, and whereas civic-minded people organizations collaborated to establish September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Voter Registration Day, and whereas the goal for the twenty twenty-three National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote in the coming months, and whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on Election Day, and whereas fewer voters participate in local odd-year elections due to lower levels of media coverage and information about local issues and candidates, and whereas Thurston County, as well, whereas the Thurston County Urge Your Neighbors to Vote Challenge aims to encourage regular voters to reach out to their neighbors with the tools, information they need, feel informed and empowered to turn in their ballots, and now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Joe DePento, recognize September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Voter Registration Day in Yale and encourage all eligible county residents to register to vote, to vote when they receive their ballot, and encourage their neighbors to vote. Sensitive yell marks in this twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-three. Spencer, please.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Diana Benson and I am Auditor Mary Hall's Chief Deputy. Thank you for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Voting is the cornerstone of our democracy, but you can't vote if you are not registered. We now have one hundred and ninety-six thousand registered voters in Thurston County. Our biggest goal in voter registration is reaching young people. Only about seventy percent of eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds are registered to vote in Thurston County, compared to over ninety percent for other age groups. The good news is voter registration has never been easier. We now have same-day voter registration, and sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can pre-register. Twenty twenty-three marks the tenth National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County. We're celebrating by launching the Urge Your Neighbor to Vote Challenge. We'll be partnering with the Timberland Regional Library to empower voters to urge their neighbors to vote, starting in October. We are challenging frequent voters to lend their knowledge to encourage infrequent voters, bridging the gap to create a more informed electorate. I'm not sure if there is a member in the audience from Timberland Regional Library. They were invited to join us. No?
Yeah.
Okay, so libraries throughout Thurston County will carry ballot party kits that voters can use to host their own events to encourage their friends and neighbors to vote. Voters can log their participation once the challenge launches in October at ThurstonWildVotes.gov. The jurisdiction with the most participants per registered voter will win. Libraries are essential tools in empowering informed voters, ensuring our democracy thrives through knowledgeable and engaged citizens. And on behalf of Auditor Hall and the Thurston County election staff, thank you again for your support and partnership in recognizing National Voter Registration Day.
Thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember Hess. If I could add, in reference to this, and appreciate the recognition for this, having served in the military, and all, because we also just got done celebrating the twenty-second year since nine eleven. I was in Iraq in two thousand and five when they had their first election. It is amazing that other countries who we, as America, have gone and helped them build their democracy, they have a higher percentage of voting than we do here in the United States. When they had their first election, two thousand and five, ninety percent of their people voted. And so I want to encourage, one, to fellow councilmembers, please, let's work together. I'm trying to get that encouragement, as well as to all the community members that might be watching this. Please reach out. It's important that right to vote, if you choose not to do it, you are giving, it's not that you're giving up that right, you're giving up your power to a small group of people. I still remember Secretary of State Wyman, when she gave a lecture on it, she had the uh, audience at South Peach, South Community College stand up, and she said, "All of you are considered eligible registered voters." And she said, "One-third of you, go ahead and sit down, because you chose not to register." Then there's two-thirds. She said, "Now the rest of you, out of one-third, you chose not to vote." And said, "That one-third right there, that's who's making the decisions for you as citizens with your right to vote." So please, I encourage you, please go out and vote.
Yes, well said. Thank you, ma'am, for attending and talking about how important it is to vote. And don't forget, ballots should drop, what, October, second to last week of October?
I appreciate all of the council's support, and we look forward to hearing from you very soon in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, and in October, expect your ballots. Um, all right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have two items, the August eighth, twenty twenty-three, and August twenty-second. Um, it's September fifth meeting minutes, and we also have an update, we need to update signers on the couch with commencement bake, adding Todd Stansel, City Administrator, Stephanie Nevich, the Finance Director, and Cam Rancor.
Point of order.
Councilmember Hess, what's your point of order?
Public comment, we skipped over.
Wow, I am just skipping everything today. Point is well received. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hess. Excuse me, public. Um, it is now your turn to comment on issues important to you that are not on the agenda, but please, turn in your cards if you haven't. We have two speakers as of now. Sheree Polito? Please come up. We have three minutes to speak, and just state your name for the record.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us, um, have the ability to come and speak. Um, Joe and I recently moved to the Yale area from the Olympia Lake City area, and we're really glad to be here. We're current, um, we had a house built at Tohoma-Terra, and it's such a lovely community, and we're so glad to be here. We're both educators, um, twenty-some-odd years in teaching elementary, and Joe has been working in various levels of education. Um, one other thing that's really important to us is safety, and one of the things that we've noticed since we've been at Tohoma-Terra is a lot of things going on with, that are really unsafe for families and kids. We live right across from a park, a beautiful park, that is right on Tohoma Boulevard, and there's been a lot of racing, um, a lot of illegal vehicles, and our biggest concern, I'll yield my time, some of my time to Joe to talk as well, but I'm, my concern is children, first and foremost, and the speeding that's going on is within feet of a playground, and people walking. If you ever were out on a, on an evening at Tohoma-Terra, you would see families and dogs, walking their dogs, and just, just amazing outdoor things that we want our families and our communities to do, but it is really, really gotten to a place where it's unsafe. So, um, Joe will talk a little bit more about some of the specifics, but what we're requesting is that that section, once you hit where the new apartments end, and that side part of the park, we're suggesting that that speed limit be lowered to twenty-five. We believe that if that happens, then um, some of the racing that is going on on a daily basis, that if they are, um, if they are, I don't want to say caught, but if there's a ticket, I believe that ticket would be more expensive if it's racing in a twenty-five than it would be at the current speed limit of thirty-five. So that's, um, that's our primary focus. So much, Joe.
Thank you. Um, oh, Joe, yeah. Joe, please, I'm calling up, say, say your name, and, uh,
My name is Joe Polito, and yes, uh, we, we moved here just a few months ago, and certainly love the area. Wanted to come out here for many years. I retired from the Air Force after twenty-five years and in education for twenty-five years. Uh, so as Sherry said, we refer to Tohoma Boulevard as the Tohoma Speedway. And, um, the reason we do that is because almost every evening over the summer, and it has slacked up a little bit right now, between the hours of about four to five to seven, cars are racing up and down that area. Um, to say a high rate of speed would be an understatement. Uh, when you see someone going by so fast that it's just a flash, uh, they're obviously doing a little more than thirty-five miles an hour. It's gotten to the point, not only do they go to the end and do their donuts, but two cars lined up at the end where the woods are and race, actually raced down to Tohoma Boulevard. As a matter of fact, one time, we actually witnessed someone standing there with a stopwatch, timing these people as they were coming by. Uh, last week was the first time I saw this. There were four vehicles, two pickup trucks and two cars, all four of them lined up at the end and went for it. Sherry said, "Right across from where we are, it's a nice little park area, play things for the kids." I witnessed when this happened, I witnessed a mother pick up her child from the park, run to her car, get in the car and drive away. Why are we being held captive? We've been talking to the police department, and they told us exactly what to do. Call them every time we see it, because they want a record of it, and we have. We've called every time. Unfortunately, we all know we don't have enough police, and it just so happens, and that's just the way nature is. By the time they make it out there, these people are gone. And we spoke with a couple of the police officers that monitor that area, and they do know some of these people. But what's going to happen the day that someone loses control? And it rolls up onto that park area? And here we are with someone who's severely hurt or killed. Now, I've done a lot of safety in my life, a lot of traffic safety. I have never, in my seventy-one years, witnessed an area that is so outrageously unsafe. Something needs to be done. Police Department talked about, yeah, we'd like to have that twenty-five miles an hour. We'd like to have a speed sign up there, you know, this is your speed.
I have that, sir.
Yes, and you know, with the cameras, if, if at all possible, as, as, uh, Mr. Hess, Council, Councilman Hess has, uh, talked to us about, but it's, it's gotten so out of hand right now, not only with the vehicles, but now what we have are people from out of our area on their dirt bikes, unregistered, by the way.
No comments, sir. Okay, um, we will go ahead and do some effort patrols immediately on that, on that area. In the meantime, we will consider, and I don't know exactly the process that we do for lowering the speed limit on those streets. Usually when they come in, there's engineers that do studies, and we get their expert opinion and all that. Um, but we will look into it if it is lowered. Um, you know, we will do that, go that route, but I think your number's not on here. Um, if you want to go ahead and shoot me an email, I'll go ahead and follow up with you on it. Sure. Um, and yeah, we'll try to.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Councilmember Smith. Um, just out of curiosity, because I know where he's talking about, way, you know, way down there. What is the process, or what about the big low-speed bumps? Is that a possibility? You know, you know what I'm talking about, the ones that they slow people down, but they're not, you know, they don't take out the under, car.
Yeah, I've been down there a couple of times. Um, I live down there.
Yeah, I know why.
Um, and I've, yeah, I've been out there, like, trying to catch the kids drag racing. Um, the, we could, the thought I'm just quickly thinking off the top of my head is that the road only is used up to Jackson, so there's probably another quarter, not a quarter mile, like an eighth of a mile that's not, not used. We could probably put something there to temporarily block that off until it is needed, until the development goes farther back. So that's an option. I'll have to check with things. Lowering the speed limit is a lot more difficult because of classification of road, but if we did that, that would prevent them from being able to line up and drag race from the woods.
The police had said that they did put low blocks up there, but people have moved them.
Yeah, but we can make a little more.
What is the process on speed bumps? Is it just something that's?
Construction.
Construction, I don't think.
It's just, okay.
Construction lose everything under there, so.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Councilmember Hess. Um, I know that we purchased the one, uh, speed sign that also provides data. Uh, is it possible, I know that as we reach the wet season, hopefully the drivers are smart enough not to want to do it during the wet season, but when, uh, possibly move that sign out there to try to find out a time and maybe work with the SRO from the high school and see if they might even add extra patrol in that area with schools out.
Yeah, I'll discuss it with the chief, and I think we'll see what we can do on that. Councilmember Johnstone.
Sign that gives data right now.
What's that?
The sign that he's mentioning that gives the data on the speed, is that in use right now?
It is. I'm not sure which street is on. Councilmember Crossman?
Collins, by Cherry Meadows. It says, "Too Fast," I mean, car goes by.
Yeah.
Because I run by it every morning, and it says, "Too fast, too fast, too fast, too fast."
That you're actually running, not.
Yeah, I'm running.
Yeah, okay.
Run that saying, "Too fast."
Yeah.
Any questions, comments?
Um, I didn't sign up, I'm sorry. I'm not from your town.
Sure. If you want to go ahead and fill out one of these cards, and we can go ahead and go ahead and speak.
Can I do it in reverse?
Sure, absolutely. So I'm going to get that information.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Terry Ball. I'm running for Commissioner District Five, and I'm not here about that. I'm a thirty-five-year veteran, combat veteran, spent twenty-two years in senior leadership. I retired as Master Sergeant of active duty after thirty-five years of service and twenty-nine years of active duty. I am for the veterans. I also am a member of the Veterans Legislative Coalition, which staff sponsors and helps write bills for veterans for the state. I also am a previous veteran service officer and have taken three previous, uh, members, uh, veterans, all the way through the Veterans Course of Pills. I know what I'm doing. Uh, why I'm here today is I'm here in support of veterans. Um, I hear that, uh, I would like to have a center where veterans put out here. Uh, we are continuing to work on isolated instances throughout the state where counties do not have veteran services. The closest veteran service you have is probably the post out here, but then, uh, then you have county services as well that you don't have out here. And, uh, my concern is, especially for the building, uh, meeting hall may be furnished by veteran, uh, may be furnished veterans organizations. County, cities, and other political subdivisions of the state of Washington are authorized to furnish pre-charge a building office or meeting hall for exclusive use of several nationally-recognized veterans organizations and their auxiliaries, subject to the direction of the committee or person in charge of such building, office, or meeting hall. The federal nationally-recognized veterans organization shall have access to, at all times, to this building. Office and/or meeting hall, counties, cities, and other political subdivisions shall further have the right to furnish heat, light, utilities, furniture, and janitorial services at no charge to the veterans organizations or their auxiliaries. That's state law. That's under RCW seventy-three point oh four, point oh seven oh. And, uh, veteran organizations are one of the, uh, are lacking in funding, lacking in personnel, and lacking in, um, all the services. I was a volunteer service officer for, um, twelve years, and, uh, the thirteenth year was while I was on active duty and transitioning into, uh, life. Um, we need your support, we need your help. Also, um, if rental takes place, you can rent it. Uh, the rent may be paid out of the Veterans Fund. The Veterans Fund is covered under RCW seventy-three point oh four. I have that copy here, too, and I have all these other copies here, too, so you can reference. Thank you very much for hearing.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone online?
We do not have any hands raised, though.
All right, all of the, rest of the agenda here.
Give me that pause, please.
Councilmember Hess.
To move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Kaminsky. Is there any discussion? All those in here say aye?
Aye.
Anybody say nay?
Close.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business. We have our on-call planning professional services agreement. Who do you believe are going to be discussing this?
Correct. Um, so the, what is in front of you is an on-call contract with Stony Beach Consulting. Um, as you know, we've lost two planners recently. We have a new one that just started last week. Um, but we are in a spot where we only have one on-call planning services, which is SCJ Alliance. And so if we get a project that's submitted by SCJ Alliance, then they review their own project, and that doesn't make sense. So we need another on-call planning service to help assist. This will only be used until the planners are on board and they're dialed in, so we don't have to have the on-call, but it's nice to have it available if needed for a project, so we don't have to make people wait months to get their project reviewed. So it's a, um, this is a pass-through fee, so what happens is when they bill us, we give it to whoever the developer's or submitter is, um, to pay that fee. It's just to have another on-call, so we can catch up on some of the review that's not happening right now. I'll happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Hess. Uh, just clarification, uh, it says that's effective in August. Would that be adjusted to effective in September if we pass it today?
Correct. Effective, as it's signed, yes. It can be effective earlier.
Councilmember Crossman.
Coming to approve on call, I, my help services agreement.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hess. I'm slow on the draw.
Slow.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in here say aye?
Aye.
Anybody say nay? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Cody. I think you're staying up there, Cody, for professional service agreement for twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan and development code updates.
Yes, um, so this before you is our comp plan update, which we are required by law to do. Um, it's required to have a new comp plan in place by twenty twenty-five. Um, the state does grant money for comp plans, so there's a grant that every city gets that covers the makeup. We budgeted a hundred thousand this year for this. Um, we probably won't spend a hundred thousand this year because we're starting so late with this. It took a while to get a consultant on board. Um, so once we start this, we'll carry over what isn't, and then the grant will fund the rest of this project. We expect it to be done probably late twenty-four, early twenty-five. We have to adopt the comp plan by the end of twenty-five. You will see the comp plan several times, so the comp plan will come to you for review in your committees. It'll come to you review as a council. Um, there'll be several open houses for citizens to comment. Planning Commission will have several open houses and workshops on this. Um, so there's a bunch of stuff that'll go into. Um, the other part I want to highlight is development code updates. So I knew, I mentioned that we have some codes that are kind of antiquated and outdated. Um, horse hitching post is one. So they'll, they'll look at, um, our codes at the same time they do our comp plan, because that's a really good time to do it, to kind of bring those up to date as well, and that'll be going through the same process, open house, meeting, planning commission, meeting with people to try to get all those things updated as well. So this will probably be a two-year process, um, but the idea is this will be done in twenty twenty-five um, with budgeted money plus the grant money that we get from the state that every city gets when they have to do it. So, questions?
Councilmember Richardson.
Yeah, how much of that grant money, so that, that three hundred and twenty-five thousand for the city development codes is not to exceed that? How, how much of that is grant, or is that all just?
No, so a hundred thousand is our budget for this next year, and then the rest is grant money.
So the rest is grant, okay.
Yeah, the, and then you get the grant money. If we need, hopefully we don't need more, that's not to exceed amount. Um, and we have them doing some basic code updates. We'll do the rest to try to lower the cost if we can. So.
Other questions, comments? Look for a motion. Councilmember Smith.
Okay, move to approve the professional services agreement between the city of Yale and a planning consulting firm. It's a household of these.
Yes.
Okay, to complete the twenty twenty-five update of the city's comprehensive plan and to complete updates to the city's development codes and the not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Second by Councilmember Johnstone. All right, any further comments, questions? All those in here say aye?
Aye.
Anybody say nay? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item C, public service contract for the construction of the off-leash dog park phase two. Cody?
Oh, yeah. Um, this will be the last one, I promise. Um, so this is the dog park we talked about. Um, this is the actual contract amount. This does not include the bathrooms. You guys, we sent the plans to everyone, or, uh, Mr. Chatwood did, so you should have had those. Um, if you have any questions, I, you know, publicly, we can talk about those. That way people can see, because not everybody got to see the plans. Um, so we can talk about those, but it includes the pavilions, the partial mulch, which is an engineered mulch, um, grass setting for the areas, and then a walking path around the outside along with fences, concrete, and then all the stub outs for the bathroom. So if we do, hopefully when we decide to put bathrooms in, at some point, we can just drop them in and hook them up. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Every, you know, we talked about this, here's the amount that it is. Um, and I know you guys have been on Facebook or other social media sites to kind of get some input, so happy to answer questions if you have any.
Councilmember Richardson.
The grass is native.
Grass, yeah, I mean, it will be native when we plant it.
And then the amount again, so that's six hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. Um, and then we have to use how much city money to, to make the difference?
So we have grant money is five hundred and seventy-five thousand total. So the difference is, um, you know, quick math, a hundred and, almost a hundred and twenty thousand, so.
So it's a hundred and twenty?
Of our own money.
Okay.
Right, because five seventy-five to get to six ninety-three is just under a hundred and twenty.
If we don't spend the city that money, then we don't get the grant.
The grant money goes bye-bye. Yeah, but somebody else will get, they'll either reallocate it or do something else, so we would lose the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, correct?
Councilmember Smith.
However, the council already approved a sum of money.
Correct.
Fifty thousand?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand.
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, right, so the difference at this point is the forty-three thousand.
Correct.
Roughly, and that is coming from where, again?
Three oh two municipal building fund, which is REIT money, which whenever someone sells a house, and Terry can attest this, they pay an excise tax. Some of that money goes back to the city along with other areas. That's new construction or old development, someone sells their house.
Councilmember Crossman.
Uh, comment and a question.
Yes.
Um, so I asked around, because I've, I've never seen my dog in a dog park, and then go, but I have no care when we're in another bad dog park. So I was asking, because I knew we wanted to go up to bathrooms in, so I was asking around and dog people, I'm like, okay, I'm like, I don't know, that's not my role. So you're a dog person, but they have dog park, and they're like, we don't need dog parks. Like, what? Dog park, see, every dog's up. So there were numerous people I asked, I have dogs, and they just said, we don't need dog parks. It's like, okay, it's like coming off guard, I was just surprised by that. I just made assumptions that people in the city with dogs would want a park to take them, but apparently not all of them do.
Councilmember, may I just ask, do those people have yards, or do they live in apartments?
Well, so, in older apartments, they don't have, some don't have, really have yards, but I did, I was, as I was contemplating what people had said in comments this morning, I did realize all of them grew up on property. Whether they have property now or not, they all grew up in property, so they might have a different mindset. They weren't, they're not city folks. Um, so I was just, put that out there, like, because I just assumed people, dog, we want a dog park, but apparently not everyone does. Um, and that wasn't from Facebook, that was from actual conversation. Um, and that wasn't from Facebook. That was from actual conversations with people, because I want to know, okay, do you need a bathroom and a dog park? Like, I never go. Do you need one or not? I mean, how important is that to you? Um, second, the question I have is, what's the yearly maintenance costs?
Dog park?
Yes.
Um, our plan is to roughly have it around the same maintenance costs as City Park, um, just because it's mowing, and we budget around ten thousand for City Park every year. The employees are already there. We just budget for re-sodding, re-grasping, fixing fences, random tasks here and there.
And they don't have to drive very far.
Yeah, they don't have to drive, I think they literally drive the mower across the screen, so.
Is that good?
In reference to that forty-three thousand dollars coming out of the one fund, uh, what is, and I guess, uh, maybe our finance director answers this, that fund is sitting at what level at this time?
Um, so right now, we are estimated to have an ending fund balance of six eighty-two in there. But so far, we budgeted to receive four hundred thousand in REIT this year. We've received about two sixty, so um.
But it's the, but the fact that we take forty-three thousand out of there is not going to drain the fund and just going.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith. I'm I'm sorry, Councilmember Richardson had his hand up. Sorry about that.
I was just thinking too, because um not just because I'm thinking about, again, people in apartments and dogs, uh, this specifically is a off-leash dog park.
Correct.
Where the rules in town, if you have a dog, it's supposed to have a dog on a leash.
Oh, correct, right.
That would be the whole reason for it. That's the why behind this?
There's, so there, we also have, like, Long Meyer Park doesn't allow animals. Um, right now, that is people's training ground for their dogs. Um, they like, because there isn't anywhere. So I can tell you that several people at Long Meyer Park that we've talked to, like, you know, you're not allowed to have your dog here, they go have nowhere else to take them, to let them off-leash, because they treat Long Meyer like an off-leash dog park. So that would allow us to kind of go, hey, there is an off-leash dog park now, please move your, please move over there so the kids can play soccer and not get a ball, there's prizzi thrown in their face.
So back to the off-leash dog park, which is the reason why we have fencing, the cost of fencing, because the idea is off-leash.
Correct.
Those rules state, if you have a dog in town, you must have your dog on a leash, and all these bad owners who don't have a dog on a leash, I'm frustrated with, and they learn how to be better owners. I'm gonna just forget that now, but that's what this is about. It's off-leash. I'm not not going against you, John. I I just think the idea needs to be remembered, the reason why. Um, and the fact that the grant money, if we don't utilize it by spending some money, then we don't get to use at all, goes bye-bye. So I guess the reason why makes sense, but again, off-leash fence, that's the utilization of it with native grass.
Councilmember Smith and Hess.
Okay, so because of all the comments and this is going on, I just, I'm gonna be voting yes, and I'm gonna say why. So the first thing is bathrooms. I don't think they're a huge deal at a dog park, because honestly, I used to drive to Lacey to a dog park with my lab, and you're not there long enough. I think it would be great to have them, but I don't think it's a huge necessity, which, you know, so just wanted to put that out there. The other thing is, it does add an amenity to a city. It's a draw, because people, I'm a dog person, a lot of people love dogs. And the houses that have been built in the last probably ten years, the yards are very small. So if you have a medium to large-sized dog, yes, you can walk that dog, but dogs love to run. And legally, you can't let them run anywhere. I mean, we do, but you know what I mean? And then, yeah, the biggest thing too is we're gonna lose that grant money, so, yeah, that's why I definitely for it, so.
Councilmember Hess.
Um, just uh in reference to this being uh a public park, uh, and I know that there's a lot of people that offer training for dogs. Would they be able to rent out a portion of it to provide classes for local owners? Uh, just like, um, use the city park here for an event or something like that, is that uh, will that work?
We can, that can be something we look into. Um, I would chat with Lynn and our, if that's council's prerogative, we can check into that. Um, the idea was there would be, you know, if someone could go there and easily host a class and be in a corner of the park, and no one can tell them no. So that's something, and I know there's somebody that already hosts class, and they do like training in Cochran Park, and I've seen in other places with their dogs on leash, so I'm sure they would probably utilize this too. So.
We can um put that through the Public Services Committee, though, and you can discuss that further.
I I just want to make sure that that is available, so that that's an option.
Question, yeah.
And then, um, I want to also uh, support what uh Councilmember Smith had to say in reference to the amenity that it brings. It is important for uh dogs to have a place to, it's not only for the dog owner to take, but also is a wonderful place for dogs to learn to be socialized. Um, and I can attest to the fact that when COVID, we had a new puppy when COVID came around, which meant that that puppy did not get socialized with other dogs or other people, and so it became kind of, it's it's a challenge now to work with it. Uh, I mean, she's doing a great job, but it's that little challenge still, and I think it would be great for our community. Uh, in reference to bathrooms, because of where it's located, can I make a recommendation of that public service? Because you guys have capability to closing your gates and locking them, and the concern of a porta potty is it being damaged during closed time? Maybe we can put some right there inside the gate that are available when the dog park is, when public services uh o- open, and that way there is a temporary location, just like they have at Silicon Park, the porta potties that line the road.
Sure, I I don't know how, if that design allows for the enclosure of it, though.
Are there hours? Are there hours suggested, or what, is it just going to be twenty-four seven?
The dog park or the dog park will be like all their parks, it's dawn to dusk.
That's what we're talking.
Dawn to sunset.
But no, uh, but public service itself, they have their gate that they close, just like you, you know, you can't gain access to the recycling bins twenty-four seven.
It's across the street.
Right, across the street, that there, that's where it can be put, and that way, when public services close, the porta potties are uh protected and and such.
And there's concerns that would cross it for them to cross street, have to upgrade that, but, I mean, yeah, we'll consider that. I mean, it's just, it's an option.
It's a whole absolute consider. And there is, just say, like, when there is any big event or something, we will bring a porta potty out there, and there's the ability to bring a porta potty out there that's not going to stop, so if, you know, we try to do that, and we can, you know, for big events, we know something's coming up, we can drop them off to make sure that there is no.
Councilmember Kaminsky, yes.
I would like to authorize Joe DePitt, the mayor, to sign the Public Services Agreement with McPlon Construction of Buckley, Washington, in the not-to-exceed amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents for the construction of phase two of the off-leash dog park in Yale.
Councilmember Hess.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Let's do a roll call, though. Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crossman? You say no?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hess?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaminsky?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Cody? We will get this dog park built. All right, moving on, resolution number six four two, an RCO grant.
Brad?
Good evening, mayor and council. Can I bring it to you, resolution number six forty-two for approval? Uh, this is a local deferred maintenance grant through RCO Recreation Conservation Office for the amount of a hundred thousand dollars with no city match. Um, the plan is with this money to purchase two pieces of equipment. Uh, one would be a Toro reel mower to replace what we have at Long Meyer Park now that we actually purchased back in in two thousand and seven when the park was built. Uh, the other one is a Kubota UTV with our ever-growing trails. This is going to give us easier access to maintain those trails. Um, or actually uh, going to be putting, well, assuming we get the grant. Going to be putting on a a broom. It's a a big broom on the front of that Kubota that, so we can sweep the trail. If there's a skip of snow, it will probably work. Um, so that's, that's the hope. Um, so this grant is very specific, so we can't use this money for anything but deferred maintenance and disequipment plates. So uh, RCO has approved it as being uh capable of purchase through this grant. Uh, so the resolution authorizes Cody and me to apply and manage this grant. Any questions?
Councilmember Richardson.
So what I'm learning a lot is with grant money, there's very specific things that you can, places you have to spend this grant money. So you can't use this grant money, spend locally to purchase these, this equipment?
No, this has to be, we have to have a plan set in place.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry. So you can't spend this money locally?
Absolutely.
For the equipment you need?
Yes.
Well, there you go. That makes me a lot happier.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brooks, then Crossman.
Oh, I was gonna motion.
Councilmember Crossman and Brooks.
That that was gonna be my question. So both of these being purchased locally. One is being great. That's what I thought. Why is uh the Toro? And unfortunately, we don't have a Toro dealer, so. Why, why Toro, say Kubota?
Because they last. How long has it been? They're, they're the machine to buy. Unfortunately, well, I'm not going to say anything bad about other manufacturers, but the Toro is tried and true.
Any other question? Councilmember Brooks.
Yeah. I move to approve, I motion to approve resolution number six hundred and forty-two authorizing the city of Yale to go by four and receive a local park's maintenance grant from the Recreation and Conservation Office.
Second by Councilmember Johnstone. Very discussion. All right, all those in here say aye?
Aye.
Any of those saying aye? Motion carries. Counsel. All right, moving on to old business. It's been scheduled. Moving on to standing council committee reports. Start with Public Safety Committee.
Well, we did have a meeting. Um, a lot of it was the same stuff that we talked about last month. Um, they are uh hoping to get a new officer on October first. This will be a new officer, and they will get, I believe, get her into the academy as soon as possible. Um, the, one of the things that all the officers are gonna have to go through is a patrol tactics training. It's state mandated curriculum to change the mindset, especially of officers that have been there for a while, because the the way to go into a situation nowadays is not just to take control, but to go in with different uh less correct, the right word, lethal and uh extreme ways of handling situations. So they're all going to be going through this training. Um, as far as court updates, Sonia was not there to give us those. Calls for service are going up a little bit, but staying pretty steady. Um, and also Matt Russell, the Assistant Fire Marshal, has joined our meetings the last couple of uh months, and um, just FYI, there were a hundred and seventy-six total calls for the city of Yale in August, so.
Councilmember Smith. We're on the Public Services Committee.
We reported this stuff.
Yeah, we're on the Finance Committee.
Hold a short uh informal meeting there. Uh, Stephanie did tell us about the, I think, seven agenda, the office designers on account with the Commission Bank, and adding Todd and everybody else there. But uh, yeah, so not too much information, but uh, you should do a good job.
I agree. All right, for uh, Mayor City Administrator Staff Reports. Um, we did get back with the YMCA feasibility study, so you should see that in your inbox either tonight or tomorrow. Um, and yeah, feel free to do what you can with it, well, um. Discussed um increasing our relationship and partnership with the lead program for Thurston County. It's um, kind of like a, I mean, they do multiple things, but part of it that I'm particularly interested in is the diversion, uh, drug diversion. Court, they kind of help um run and assist. Um, I'll be getting involved, more involved with them, trying to see what it would um, what it will look like, and it's going to take more of our courts and our officers. We're setting up a meeting here in the next couple of weeks to talk about it, but um, arrests will still happen, but they will hopefully be going through this lead program and getting the help they need to um drop drugs or whatever their issue might be. Um, it's not just drugs, there's other, other stuff they deal with as well, but so looking forward to that. And other than that, Cody, do you have any updates from Public Services? Any projects you want to?
Yeah, you may have driven by the city park. Um, the construction's underway at the stage. Um, so it's not, I've seen a couple, it's not a pizza joint, or there are a couple of comments about what it could be. It's the new stage. Um, so they'll do demolishing first, as you've noticed. That stuff will come out there really quick. This is a quick turnaround. We wanted to get them started really quickly. Um, so demolishing will happen today, tomorrow, and then Monday, everything will be gone, the concrete, all of that will be gone. They're going to be really quick about turning this around, so that's the biggest thing we have going on with the dog park approval. Um, they're planning to start next, at least mobilizing next week. So they're going to get on it really quick, hot to trot, which is good.
Thank you, Cody. Um, I want to update on something else. Uh, we have the um, community conversations tomorrow, noon at um Uptown Lounge. Um, I think that's about it. There's something else I wanted to say, but yeah, anyway, we'll start our council member reports. Let's start with Councilmember Johnstone.
Been last the past couple of times. Um, we had a very hometown weekend. We went to the first Young High School hometown football game on Friday. Um, we're at the Blue Thunder and the Seahawks dancers, and Toot Toot Bo were there. Super cool to see that. Um, I also went to the first breakfast at the Senior Center this past weekend. I haven't done that before, but it will be something we're gonna start doing, because it was wonderful. Excellent rice. Um, and it's not directly based in Thurston County, but I did start the Bridges Program for the New Year last night. They do offer services to youth in Thurston County, as well as virtual services. It's for kids ages four to eighteen. It's a support group where they have lost a mom, a dad, or brother or a sister. And it's twice a month, so it is available to Thurston County residents, and it's through Mary Bridge, through Multi-Care. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnstone. Councilmember Richardson.
Well, I was able to attend the Yale Chamber Forum today. It was a good presentation with Superintendent Chris Woods for Yale Community Schools. Uh, felt really good about what he shared, and uh, saw what we use, and I believe the children are future. Teach them well and let them lead the way.
Councilmember Richardson, I agree. That was good, um, good state of, state of the school.
School, yeah.
So it's uh, Councilmember Crossman.
Uh, biking fest was this weekend. It was a lot of fun. Went there, a lot of people. I didn't go before. It was like, wow. So questions I had that may answer, maybe not yet. Um, in regards to that, I know last year parking was a big problem. Was that a big problem this year as it was last year? Did they improve it?
So we provided uh stuff for the fire department to put up blockades, and they were appreciative of that. I haven't talked to them yet if that worked or not. It seemed like it did when I drove by Saturday and Sunday, so. Yeah, I would assume the parking looked a lot better when I drove by the last two times.
Any other issues that?
Um, we have a couple. There's this for trying to locate some trash cans they parked, but I think they will give them back to us. The park looked amazing. They were a really good job of cleaning, so I want to, every, that's one thing for every event that happened. Every event in the park did a really good job of picking up after themselves, like, I made it better. Biking Fest too, so kudos to everyone that did that.
Yeah, I mean, parking is a huge issue. It has been not just battery, but downtown as well. Obviously, we're doing the parking lot over here that council approved. Um, yeah, council approved that, yep, excuse me, last year. I was like, oh, did we, uh, but uh, council approved that one, and as well as the purchase by Mill Pond, I think that'll help that Long Meyer, the Cochran Park as well, for that overflow, so. Sorry to, go over, is that it?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
So just out of curiosity, did they actually use the barricades or just the cones?
I saw the barricades up around their uh apron area where the trucks come out, so.
So you loaned those?
Yeah, we loaned them.
They were excited, because I went to the the Southeast Thurston Fire Authority, and they were talking about it. They were concerned again about what happened last year, and they said, we're gonna put up cones, and I said, well, you know, I heard that the city has barricades, so I'm glad for that. Um, the other things that came out of uh the Southeast Thurston Fire Authority were that the football games are starting underway for both Yale and Rainier, and they will be at those. Um, and then, this has been an ongoing topic since I started the the Quint truck, which is the truck with the ladder, that they've been trying to get one, because Yale keeps growing and it's getting taller. Um, and it's definitely a concern, and they've been looking for two years and have not been able to find one that's, you know, that's decent for, I mean, they're hundreds of thousands of dollars, so they are going to go out and start looking for a new one, because they realize there there is concern, because we keep growing and growing up, and they need that truck, so. Um, and then I did go to the FFA Car Show. We have a wonderful FFA, this FAA's.
Isn't it? It's the biggest in the nation.
Biggest in the nation. My Car Club won uh best part. Biggest in the nation. My Car Club won Best Participation Award again. But anyway, yes, thank you. That's it.
Councilor S.
Want to put out is for the Regional Housing Commission, as you may, if you saw the news bulletin that went out, they just opened up. The homeless community, I don't want to use the term party. The homeless community, I wish I could remember exactly where, they're in the process of having people from I-5 encampments. Moving into there, and it looks like it's a very good success. It'll be a good success story of, we learn our lessons, as I always bring up in the meetings. From King County and Seattle, that if we learn our lessons from how they operate and what they've done, should be good. Intercity Transit Authority, things are going well with that. I am encouraging them with their planner to kind of start looking at Yelm, because. We're a small community, and they always thought of us as a small community until I went, no, we're no longer small, and they always went, oh, you guys have grown. Yes, so hopefully at some point, somebody will reach out to the planners here and start looking at where they can put other bus stops. Or come up with a transportation plan to help out with the city of Yelm. And. I participated in. It's wonderfully, wonderfully bent, put on by Thurston County Chamber of Commerce and the Olympia Yacht Club. It was wonderful. They had the Chehalis Tribe do a salmon bag. They had another element come out and do the, provide for other foods. When you, as a city representative or business person, purchase a ticket, that ticket purchase is actually paying for two. Military members, active duty from JBLM or the local Navy area to come out and enjoy. It was wonderful. The only thing was I got in trouble with the wife, because we didn't ride the yacht out. Because I had a meeting that afternoon. So next year, please put on your calendars. It's the first Friday after Labor Day. And it's a wonderful event. It's a great opportunity to let the active duty service members know that they are supported. Gives them a great opportunity to have fun, and it just, it was a great opportunity for community to show between Thurston County. And the military members that are in our area.
Thank you, Councilor S. Councilor Brooks.
I want to start out my report by thanking each one of you for going to these community events and showing up. It's not always expected of us, so it's great that you do that on your own will. Especially Hes going to the food bar, because that was the first day of kindergarten, so I couldn't go. I also wanted to ride the yacht. But instead, I went to the Public Safety Meeting and with Holly Smith. And also. What? That time. Thank you for correcting me. In between that, on Saturday, this past Saturday, I went to the Tenino First Responders Potluck, and that's something that's. Created and hosted by a city councillor, thinking the sheriff was there. City police were there, elected officials and candidates were there. It was amazing, like free pony rides. Band, and it's inspiring and something I would love to see Yelm do.
John O'Callaghan is a council member.
I'm the council member, right?
John O'Callaghan is the council member.
He is. He personally invited me. Oh, yes. Oh, so he gets the credit that he's due. I also was at the September Forum for the State of the Schools, which was super duper like well-attended today. I think it's because it was at the cinema. And then I was the very first guest at the Finance Committee today. So I'll end on that high note.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. Councilor Kaminsky.
I have no meetings, but I also did attend the Chamber Lunch, and it was great, State of the Schools. And I just wanted to confirm, are we still on for our retreat on the twenty-second?
Yes, it will be local here in Thurston County, so don't expect, we're gonna have staff, there's some staff. During the afternoon, so it'll be overnight, just a few hours, as we said. You should see something here this week about some details. And, Councilor Grant? Thank you. And just to count. Echo Councilor Brooks, appreciation for everyone. I, I think y'all are doing a great job on council, attending all these different events. Yelm's being well represented, not only in the city of Yelm, at our local events, but throughout the county, and it's, it's definitely been noticed by other. Heresictions at my mayor's meetings, they, you know, they comment on that, guess why I saw this way, blah, 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 and really random council members. So thank you very much for doing that, and I'm representing the city of Yelm well. And thank you all for the public who's been here, and it's a long meeting, not long, it's actually not that long, it feels like it's been longer, but thank you for sitting through it and attending. Councilmember Smith.
Move to adjourn.